Well, I don't know. I would say, what did you have in place to deal with this?
Don, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, guys, do what you can.
All right, it is five thirty-one. I will officially call the meeting to order.
Oh, sure.
This is our Common Council and Planning and Zoning Commission. It's our joint work session at the City of Bellevue. Today's Thursday, January ninth, twenty twenty-five, and like I said, it's five thirty-one. Just a reminder, please turn off all cell phones, mute them if you're in-house, mute yourself online if you're not speaking, and that's except for emergency personnel, so. We do a roll call for Common Council.
Yeah, sure. Thank you to her, Donnie. Councilmember Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrero.
Yeah.
Councilmember Open House.
Yes.
Councilmembers Reed. Do we have? Yeah, you're here.
Here.
Elect.
Elect, yeah, Councilmember elect.
Elect.
CCE.
Here.
Councilmember-elect Davis. Maybe? Okay, they're online, just on my move.
I am.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yep.
Roll call for Planning and zoning commission.
All righty, Chair Kurtz.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Zul, Uchli.
Here.
Uh, Chris Limer.
Yeah.
Fisher Rootwell.
Here.
Yeah, let's see who that is.
Notice of demand compliance, finding that the special meeting and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh four within forty-eight hours prior to the meeting at the City of Bellevue City Hall, Post Office, and on the city's website on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I will move that the notice for this meeting was posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four-two oh four.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Call for conflict. Um, as outlined in Idaho Code seventy-four dash four zero four, is there any conflict for tonight's agenda? At this time, um, I will open up for public comment. This is for items of concern not on the agenda tonight. There's any public comment, please, um, keep your comments from three to five minutes. Seeing none online and seeing no hands in City Hall, I will go ahead and close public comment. Um, let's start us off on the work session while we're here tonight. So the city issued a text amendment for the business zone, LB slash R light business residential zone, and code sections related to development of properties within the pay prevention zoning districts. Um, I'd love to turn it over to Community Development Director Brian Parker to get us started this evening.
All right, thank you, regard done. Yes, Brian Parker, Community Development Director. Uh, thank you all for making the time tonight. It's great that you all are here. Just a recap, we had a work session in November on this. Uh, most of you guys played at that as well. Uh, it was really good discussion, uh, with the existing zoning standards, uh, what did, what is currently there as far as not conforming and forming uses, kind of how that works. And then their discussion on design standards, um, and it seemed like there was preference for more intensive uses and more density in the area, in business zones. So that'll jump in. Uh, we had a survey out, uh, as far as public outreach. Demographically, all the respondents referred it in English. Just want to point that out that we're clearly missing a good portion of their populations. Keep that in mind as we move forward. Uh, but yeah, a lot of the survey response, uh, I should say we got about a hundred fifty, a hundred fifty people started to quit or started the survey, um. Some people skipped questions. None of them were mandatory, so it was a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty responses on each of those, which I thought was pretty good, uh, response rate. About eighty percent of those identified as Bellevue residents. Others as well. All right, uh, yeah. So what first question that after the demographics, uh, how did people rank priorities uh, for what we should be aiming to achieve through this code amendment? Preservation of existing businesses and character were the top. Overall, it's apparently flat. Everything ranks throughout evenly, um, but like I said, those two kind of came out a little bit ahead, um. We need to de-prioritize development of making parcels, which I thought was a little bit interesting. Then the next question was, uh, what do we think or what they thought about permitting apartment and townhouses in business zones? About the twenties just said outright, no, uh, pretty similar amount gave a yes, or if that's part of mixed use development, uh, and then the remaining bunch, uh, then yes, if it's restricted for Bellevue, but employees or uh, restricted for income-qualified individuals, uh, or a combination of any of the both. They check all that applies sort of a question. And the next chunk got into the transportation. Unsurprisingly, about eighty-five percent of folks said they got two businesses downtown by automobile. For reference, uh, the last survey data that that eighty-eight percent of Bellevue residents get to work via a single-passenger car. Uh, so the system was that. The good news is that when people are walking or biking, the majority of us did not feel terribly uncomfortable, uh, walking, biking around town. And then the next question was if they, if it was more comfortable, if they felt safer, would they frequent businesses more without driving? Uh, and a good amount said, yeah, probably would. Very few people said, no, we wouldn't. Then asked about community character, and this is one that tied in well with the open house events, uh, the there was a sense that has some character to it, uh, the individual of the open house commented pretty frequently that, uh, it is a a social character, there's a sense of community amongst the people, uh, as far as architecturally and urban design and feeling like there is a sense of place physically, that was less so. Then this last question, take with a grain of salt, it seemed like I got, I got a lot of feedback that they didn't like how this was formatted and on mobile devices, it didn't read very well. Uh, but I just wanted to kind of get a sense of where they thought of as the downtown of Bellevue. Uh, and so this map, I overlaid all the people that said Chestnut to Spruce, Pine to Elm, et cetera, et cetera, and each block, you know, then got one vote based on that. Uh, and it seems like Poplar to Cedar, Cottonwood, Broadford, that area was pretty strongly identified as the downtown. Uh, but it also extended, uh, from Chestnut to Spruce, which was a big place.
I've got a quick question on that map. Um, so the width of the map correlates to how strongly people felt the north-south.
Yeah, how often that was identified as part of the downtown.
Okay, so that's not a representation of people think it's.
No.
Just why?
Nope. It was. The question was phrased. What do you think? Or would you say downtown starts and ends, and then gave all the street?
Just been going somewhere.
Yeah. And then, yeah, like I said, we had open houses, my tech box got cut off. But yeah, it was about five people, each of them, uh, I will classify it as intimate. You know, people stuck around, they talked with me for an hour or two, which I thought was awesome. We were really able to get into some good in-depth planning conversations. Things that they really identified, like I said, there is a strong social character, uh, there was a lot of concern about gentrification and changes happening that are going to push out long-term residents. They want to make sure of the plan in place for coenforcement and making sure that whatever rules we do and put, put in place, we can actually make sure actually happen. Uh, and then, uh, the portion of the business zone that's in the floodplain, if it felt deserves some special attention, make sure the balance protected the best we can. So I'll move on to the discussion. Uh, so the first one of these, I'm going to ask you all to think back to your college days. You wake up, you have no idea where you are, how you got there. Maybe your pants are on backwards, I don't know. Look out the window, how do you know, oh, good, I'm in Bellevue, I may, I'm here. What are the landmarks? What are the things that you see that?
To me, it's the hillsides. Not so much the town itself, but it's the hillsides and, uh, the vision beyond the town.
Like, for me, it's cow catcher ridge, mini-moor mine, the river.
For me personally, it's, um, like the bike path and the historic homes on second.
What'd you say the second thing was?
The historic homes on Second Street.
Yeah.
All I can think is like the bumpy road.
The lack of crosswalks. You always tell us one in Bellevue, if you get on Main Street and you disappear into something.
Doesn't look like Ketchum.
Or, or I would say like the general sense of quietness in general. I mean, it is quieter than the rest of the valley, which is.
I'm going to talk down the sections. We can see if anybody's got hands up on that. Thank you.
Anybody online have any thoughts? They've been, no?
As far as landmarks, I was trying to look for somewhere to put it in so I don't start coughing, but I know I'm in, in Bellevue when I see the old Wood River welding, I see Mahone's, I, I see the art, the, the really nice grocery store on the south end, obviously, when I when it just feels like it closes in and I see Joe Matheny's place. And, and I feel like, I feel like I'm home when I, when I entered or see those things.
Old room Mahoney?
What's that?
Do you have any comments?
No, uh, yeah. You know, I like to just to the downtown, there's a community that so many people forget about, you know, and, uh, it is, is, is weird, it's bizarre, but you know, the people like the downtown of Bellevue and, uh, you know, that's all I'm going to say for now, but you know, it's, it's, it's good.
I'm also saying Pepper Club. I mean, I feel like that's the most common building, like visually, well, for eye to eye and attractive because it's so, it's so old, right? So it's like.
And the Larson Building too.
Larson, Larson.
Yeah, that's the big historic.
Remember, remember Bellevue is going to be this, uh, state capital at one time. That's all I'm going to say for now.
I echo kind of Tammy's, um, description of when it closes in, you know, when you kind of get the, the bookends of what some people feel like downtown feels like, and I think the historic buildings play a lot into that, the Bellevue Museum and the big building at the end, you know, that kind of bookends in terms of historic.
See, we're good. Segue, uh, as far as the Wood River welding and some of these older historic uses. Um, there's a lot of sense of pride in we are a town that built ourselves. We do things ourselves. We have local folks making things for us. Uh, but there's also this desire that we want more intensive uses, we want to clean things up a little bit. We want to grow in the bar. So I guess the question is, how do you guys feel in, inappropriate to mesh those two ideas together? I think it can be done. I think we just have to be deliberate and conscious about it. Um, the current process would, or the tool available, I guess, would be a condition lose permit. Include the standards in your code, uh, but generally, uh, they get along well with their neighbors, they're not going to be noisy, produce a bunch of pollution, things like that, not going to do undue traffic. Is that sufficient? Is that too much? What do you guys think?
I, I'd like to get the documentation about where you've gathered this majority impetus for development and growth as a priority provoker. Because it's certainly not in the survey, right? And this all began over a year ago, so I'm just trying to figure out how this has become a multiple meeting over a year process of trying to, to do something to, to enable development on Main Street and all these other things that seem to be the purview of of a planning, um, a city that's planning for its community would be. And I'm just wondering how we've gotten to this point for over a year that the majority of residents who have submitted public comments and the majority of residents who responded to the survey have indicated that they have other priorities. And I've also don't see any really meaningful documentation about the impact of density for, uh, the increasing risk for home insurance and our, our housing insecurity here. You know that many, um, insurance underwriters are pulling back from the Wood River Valley because of our density and fire risk. So I'm just wondering where I just, I, I never get to see or I've never seen, and I know you've just gotten here, so I'm wondering what you've been able to amass, how we got to this point, but this has been an overwhelming topic for over a year. Residents have repeatedly said that they want a more thoughtful approach, and this is not a priority, and yet this is the second, I, I just have never seen where the, the residents have, have been of expressed where we are today.
You want to start this off on that?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think there is support for redevelopment to support multifamily housing was pretty evident in the survey.
Can we pull that back up? Is that okay? I'm going to pause it right here. I think that, while I understand the question that you have, um, we're in a joint workshop tonight, and the intention of the workshop is to have collaborative discussion on this topic.
Right.
Think as we get towards the end of this, I think that's something we need to dive a little bit into, but I think your question right now, now is a little derailing of what the intention of the workshop is. I understand where you're coming from in terms of trying to understand the history of it, but I think we're actively in a collaborative communication workshop, and we should keep flowing through the steps that Brian has prepared for us. And as we get towards the end, maybe we can close the loop on some of the questions you have and have further discussion about it.
Okay, great. I would like, I would ask though, that any statistics or references to things are, are validated, right? I think that's an appropriate request, that if you reference, um, a preference, an expression of resident priority and things like that, or a specific statistic um, from there, it would be nice to, to see it because you can't round up to eighty percent when it was almost one and four, that was a non-resident, right? It was seventy-seven percent. And you can't equate forty percent to twenty percent. They're not similar.
I think if you go back to it, it was not, it was eighty percent residents.
I believe them.
Okay.
Um, but I'm just saying, but it would be easy if we could just.
We're referencing the survey that has a majority of Bellevue resident replies. And we have a sitting council and committee here that are appointed and elected to represent residents in the City of Bellevue to have this discussion. And the intention is this workshop is what it is. It's a workshop.
I got it, I got it. I'm just saying, I'd prefer.
So we'll keep flowing and Brian will keep presenting what he's prepared and we'll keep having a discussion.
All right, hit it, Brian.
Yeah.
Uh, I see Tammy had her hand up.
I, I did. I think the mayor caps, encapsulated it, but I, I did want to point out that but for any one of our residents who may not have articulated whatever and commented, because we have well over two thousand residents and so a hundred, even a hundred and twenty residents to make a comment about specifically what's supposed to be the downtown core does not negate our responsibility as elected officials to be forward-thinking and less reactive to requests for development, requests for annexation, requests for any of this. And part of this workshop that I understand is that we're trying to be more proactive and looking forward so that we can better attend to the requests and the needs that are coming. Whether they're few or many, we can't pretend like they're not coming just because someone in a survey says it's not a priority. And I don't mean that in a bad way. I just mean that in a, a sense of planning. This is what we're doing. We're planning. Instead of letting things happen to us, we're trying to participate collaboratively together so that we can better plan for our community's future. And that's our job.
Thank you, Sam. Do you want to just rephrase the question for this discussion topic you have? Just restate it again.
So the, the existing light industrial and, uh, maybe a little bit perceived as less desirable uses have an important function in the town and have given a sense of place and give it, uh, meaning. Uh, and so how can we best incorporate those into it?
Um, it's our way, like, you know, I've thought about a lot, and, you know, people who've been on Main Street and like the welders, for example, that like, you know, or for future, if it is light industrial, they have to or require it in some type of retail, but then that gets tricky, right? And space off of like, if you're a restaurant, you need this many parking spaces, right? But if you're like, you know, some type of supply store, you need this many parking spaces, so it, because then it gets tricky with parking and then when the business they can operate, right? So like how how is the light industrial determined? Yeah, I'm more curious, like how, yeah, how does that get, like, how many parking spaces does light industrial need?
Oh. Diane probably knows off the top of your head.
I don't know the answer specifically off the top of my head, but it has to do with the use.
Okay.
And, and it's, it's in the parking section of our code. Um, but it lays out how many parking spaces you need for, uh, elementary school or a welding shop or
Right.
landscapers, um, garden centers, things like that.
Right, so like landscapers on Main Street, I don't really see that, like the high need to attract people to come to downtown Bellevue, but like if it's a welding shop that also offers educational classes of how to weld or like, you, like, I don't know, things that drive industry to the space, like in what, like, laborably, like, you know, if you just have a whole bunch of restaurants, then it turns into, and bars, it's going to just from, since the Capitol Hill in Seattle.
I'm not sure.
You know, or, you know, like a certain strip, so how do you thoughtfully create diversity within that space that integrates all of our community to grow, right? In a
inclusive way.
Just for my clarification, Brian, when you're asking this question, are you looking at it from kind of you know, the tail ends of the entire Bellevue, where we're leaning at it from a downtown scope? Um, just in terms of tradespeople industrial integration?
Yeah.
Did you have a kind of an area you were within that?
If you want the answer to be, we're going to get them out of downtown, out of the business zone off Main Street into the appropriately zoned light industrial, that is perfectly acceptable plan. Uh, it is going to have impacts because there's consequences to that, the option to relocate business, obviously. Uh, and things like, and they may just relocate, clear out a building. Uh, and so I guess what I'm saying that is an op, that is an option, and that is something we can explore, if that is the direction you'd want to go. But if you don't want to go that direction, what other option may?
Hasn't light industrial always been historically in the, kind of the edges? Is it, is there uses that might pose some sort of, you know, impacts on, on neighborhoods and businesses and stuff, right?
My feedback on that, or I'll frame it on this, it would be that, um, kind of respecting what already exists, but maybe, um, not finding a way to support, uh, industrial moving to the outskirts of town, but not necessarily pushing or rehoming what already exists. I do like Jessica's kind of thoughtfulness around the creativity of, you know, restaurants, retail, that kind of mixed business, and, um, if there is a light industrial component moving forward, how does it also have a, you know, open, open doors to customers, retail, kind of experiential component as well? John, do you look like?
I'm, I'm quite confused, to be honest with you. Where, and maybe, and maybe it's just how the question is phrased, it's like like, how should light industrial be integrated into, I, I'm, I'm just confused with the question. So I'm not quite sure how to respond, because I think the way I look at it, like, southern, the Southern Bell, you know, portion of that light industrial, right? So there, there's probably an interesting, um, sense of community within the Southern Bell area, which is, I mean, I go there to get my oil changed or whatever, and that's probably, I, I like the feel of that light industrial there. When you look at Main Street and what I would, what I, what I think would be unfortunate if we continue to allow light industrial on Main Street, then we're a light industrial strip mall. What we've, you know, and, and that's what it is, that's what it is, but I, I don't think I want that for our community personally. Um, and I probably would echo a handful of people in the, in the, who live here. And but, and then have to have it on either end is, it is what it is, and so leave it there, but to grow it on either end is probably not something else that I would support. Because it's like, then again, it's just like, okay, when do you, when do you get into downtown and when do you leave downtown? And what is, what is downtown? Um, because, you know, with, with planning, this is one thing that I think that that I have become, although it's, it's unfortunate with, you know, P and Z, because anything that, any business that comes in off, that comes in and puts in an application, it's very easy to say, it's very difficult to say no to anything the way that our code's written. We can say, we can tweak it a teeny bit, but very little. It is very difficult to say no or to, um, to be able to to steer that, or if they, if you were a, a business owner, if you were a developer and you wanted to come in, the door's wide open. There's nothing there to give them direction as far as, you know, what to, what the business should be, or what the property should be developed like, or what it should be managed for. Um, so it's, 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 the door's wide open. So I think what I would like to see is we need to, we need to rein that in. And so what do we, wherever, wherever downtown is determined, we need to figure that out and change and to, to tighten our code for that section of town. And then for the, for the other, uh, the, um, the light industrial, then it's, I mean, and maybe even still then on, if you're on Main Street, you know, maybe, maybe there's a different set of restrictions for Main Street light industrial versus, you know, if you're in the Southern Bell or, or one of these future annexations, if there's an industrial component, just light industrial. Component of one of those, then, um, it could be shifted that way. But I also think there's a lot of businesses that operate out of their homes, um, that, that shouldn't be. They need a place to go, they need a place to build their shop, uh, so they can operate, you know, legit. You know, and not out of their garage, um, uh, you know, off of, you know. You name the street, there's, there's a business going on. Yeah, we're kidding ourselves, that's not the case, I mean, we, we know that's happening. And so we need to give these places, people a place to go, uh, so that they can build their shop and run their business. And whether that's a light industrial, retail, combination, whatever, I don't know how we explore that, but something that's, so yeah, that's. That's where I'm at, and I don't know if that helps or hurts, but.
I, I kind of feel like our, our, our limitations have to do with topography on the west side of the highway. Um, because we have the bench and then it drops off. And on the east side of the highway, we have Main Street and then we have the town site. And so we're really limited in terms of where any light industrial is going to happen. And, you know, in preliminary plans that I've seen, um, you know, for, you know, one annexation. Proposal anyway, there's a, a lot of light industrial that's proposed. And it's not on Main Street and it's, it's, it's designed well. Um.
It's not north and south.
We don't have anything, we don't have any application on the north end, so we only have the one application that. I'm not quite sure where we are with that, but, you know, on the south side, I've seen some preliminary plans. And there's a lot of light industrial in the, in there and, and it seems to be appropriately designed. With the surrounding other uses. One example, maybe it's a bad example, I'll just use it anyways. Um, is the, um, it's not Rocky Mountain, it's Sun Valley Bronze. Um, they are, as, as I understand it, our, our biggest moneymaker. Um, maybe next to Agnes's, um, but they're, they're, they pull in some very good revenue for the city. And that is in a light industrial district, I still want a zoning map on the wall. And, and, um, and, and they expanded and expanded and expanded. To the point where, you know, they're, they're built out, completely built out. And topography plays a role in this situation because they're back right up against the top of the bench. And the canal and then Riverside Estates subdivision is down below there and, um. And, and Riverside Estates hates it, they absolutely hate having a light industrial. Zone property above them and, you know, in several talks with several of the neighbors over the years. Um, I've, you know, tried to say, well, gosh, you know, since nineteen eighty-six, that's been zoned. You know, light industrial, so bummer for you. I mean, it's sort of like, you know, but, but, you know, how do we integrate them? I don't know, maybe, you know, better buffering, better landscaping, you know, better design. Yeah, those are my thoughts.
You make a good point, Diane, in terms of like, and that's the one thing that I think that's, that's, or probably any community is, is challenged with is. Here in Bellevue, we've got a lot of, of places that are, are on Main Street that, you know, they're in the business district, but, but they don't comply with their. So they're non-conforming use, right? So, yeah, I think I said this last time, I don't remember last meeting, it's like, it would take, it could take another eighty years. For those businesses to go to change hands and then to realize that they're not in conformance and so they turn into something else. So this could take, and maybe that's okay, maybe it could take another eighty to a hundred years for that, for that. The character of some of these place, the, the state of downtown area to change, cuz we're not gonna boot them out. You know, they're gonna stay there, they're gonna be there, whether they're resident or whether light industrial, um, business, but. So it's like, what, what do we do in the meantime, and maybe this is where you go into like the integrate, what do we do in the meantime to? To it, to keep the people that live on, off the bench or to, what do we, what do we do to so that everybody can be happy? Right? And, and I don't know what that is, and maybe it's some, some landscaping or buffering and things like that, but you can't also then go to Sun Valley Bronze and go, hey. Uh, boy, these people don't like it, so you need to do this, you can't do that. So, so I think it's like, where do we really wanna invest our time and energy? You know, I mean, it's like, I'm sorry, but you, you, you bought next to that place. Whether you knew it or not, you did or didn't do your homework, sorry. It is what it is, if you want, put it on the market, move if you don't like it. So it's like, what do we do, so I think we need to figure out where we wanna invest our time and energy in this. Um, so we can have a brighter future going forward, but realize it may take a while. For some of these things to actually evolve and change.
Now, is it appropriate for me to ask, when you talk about doing things, why, uh, there is a dearth of enforcement on current ordinances? Or is that not part of this?
Sorry, can you just?
Yeah, is there a dearth, there's a dearth, you wanna talk about doing things, right? And everyone's talking about, and there seems to be a lot of rules and regulations that are not currently enforced, I know you're working on that. So how does that factor into this discussion and how did that fall down as a priority and all of it, or is that not good?
I, I think it's premature to, to, I think we should keep rolling with Brian. And then, and then, well.
Okay.
I mean.
I mean, I think it's a valid topic because John's bringing up, and I are too, so it's valid to kind of say, you know. As we're discussing all this, what can we also be doing about non-conforming use? And this did get brought up at the last workshop, so, you know, as we're looking at it, um, you know. What can we do to better compliance as we're looking at progressive board?
Yeah, what are the maniables?
I think it's in tandem, it's a important kind of topic to keep it front of mind as we're going through this.
But also some of those non-conform uses, that, that, they, they could still be within, um, uh, there's nothing wrong. I mean, there's, there's, there's nothing wrong with, you know, having a, a resident there, um, on Main Street and there's, there's, boy, within their code. Every right to be there, um, so it's not like we can, there's not a code enforcement issue associated with that, it is what it is. Um, there may be a handful of those, it's probably case by case basis, and we're, we're looking at a. Bigger picture, bigger plan.
Yeah, I think it's important to kind of differentiate the non-conforming uses, the things that have historically been there. That they are limited on what they are allowed to do as far as expanding their building, changing their sods, things like that. They have a right to be there, and then there's the code enforcement side of things, of people putting up illegal signs and lights and. Starting a business without getting permission in the wrong zone, things like that. Uh, I think those are two very different things and we treat them very differently, um. The topic I was kind of aiming for was the latter, the, the first that, uh. The non-conforming uses and how we keep or encourage them to move out. Uh, but then the other side of the code enforcement, uh, you know, it's been staffing primarily, there's been problems. Getting better at it, it's that, the written.
Yeah, I, I feel that the code, code enforcement side of it is a work in progress and that is something that I think is a priority. For this year, it's a priority for staff, it's a priority for council, so I think that will be a continued process. Um, and then echoing, yes, you know, we do have the non-conforming use side of it, but as John pointed out. They are, you know, within code and it's not like we're trying to force that out, but we can, you know, make sure compliance is happening and. All of that as we're, um, looking.
Yeah.
And I think I was. Go ahead, go ahead. That, Sean.
No, go ahead.
You know, I, I was gonna say, uh. One of the cool things about, and about Bellevue is that we're, you know, we've been around a long time, we've got a lot of stuff. And, you know, we are weird and all the above, but we, uh, uh, talking to people. It's not about the old people or the old businesses, it's what are gonna, what are we gonna do in the future? You know, and, and as far as housing and, uh, and, and Main Street, for example. And, and doing things, you know, as, that's where you, we should concentrate on now, it's like, what, you know, we can't change. You know, old stuff, but we can change new stuff and we should be able to tackle that and, you know, and. Get, get on it, so that's my thoughts.
I, I was gonna say that, you know, when the, the market, you know, really picked up a couple, couple of years ago. It seemed like a lot of the homes on Main Street were starting to go. Wow, you know, people are offering me a lot of money for my property and, and so, you know, there certainly were opportunities. So I think the market, you know, is gonna drive a, a lot of what is, what's gonna happen in these legally non-conforming. Spaces on Main Street.
But how can, how can we help businesses that are already existing? That may not look like they're conforming. Right, how can we help guide them to in, like, I guess this is, I take this, cuz I sat in that workshop too. How can we help guide some of these things that look like they're non-conforming to be more. Um, I guess, not more conforming like, but how can we integrate them into what we're doing so that then. We can be wise council and wise planning and zoning commissioners and handle applications that come in from. Let's say Wood River Welding or like the, the Tooling Express guy wants to change and he eventually wants to retire. So what are some of the things that we can do that are specific to our downtown core, not the whole city? Right now, right, this is what we're looking at, what can we do in our specific downtown core? I know I'm affected as a business owner, right, but what can we do to help integrate? What might not be allowable? Or, or something that, that would otherwise be allowable and, and help incorporate that. So that then it, it maybe moves to forward, right? It moves forward to a vision that we see Bellevue being, which is kind of cool and eclectic. And still, but still, like, not, not permit any further light industrial, not promote it, but. But also allow certain things to happen so that we can bring business owners and business people to downtown. That are, that live in our community, right, so how do we integrate this? What are some ways that we can do that?
I think that's what we're trying to.
I know, so that's why I thought I would go back to the question.
I think one thing to consider though is like, commercial, like really large, larger commercial spaces than looking at like. What's fitting and having that part of, so even if it's like multi. Use downtown or if it's like half light industrial, like how big something can actually, like. I know we're not doing like box stores, but looking at actually what's, you know, so we might build this out. Or thinking about all of this and what's actually selling in the commercial real estate, what's not. It's another, I guess, thing to consider in, I don't know. Talking about integrating and how people upgrade, but let's say, you know, they wanna change their business, but that means they would have to tear down and rebuild. Like what's actually feasible for them to do that, I don't know. And then rabbit hole there.
Can I get you to concisely restate?
Yeah, sorry, um, so, okay, so. I'm thinking about just light industrial and thinking about. So let's just say, I'm just thinking about, so the Sun Valley Bronze, like, let's say, you know, they maxed out their space, but. If there is a larger space south industrial, then they can move, but that's a really large space. And so if we update our light industrial. To continue or still be allowed right there, or if we don't. Imagining like, okay, what kind of business can actually go in that space if, you know, they move out, they go elsewhere. And then that can't be like industrial anymore, but actually thinking for a commercial space and everybody's idea, oh, you can just turn those into apartments. It's really expensive and difficult to do, so thinking about, okay, so these people, you know, we decide. As a council committee, you know, we decide, okay, this isn't going to be industrial anymore, there's these industrials. Spaces, you know, and they move, are those going to sit? Or is there actually in the market to them refill with other people in the valley? This is, does that work in size?
So you're asking about kind of a size limit on uses so that when they. Vacate and something else comes in behind it is not one model that they could build that they are then trying to.
Yes, I, yeah, I, yes, I guess so, yes.
Yeah, that's something I will think about.
Yeah, that's, yeah, just a question. Thinking aloud.
It, it, you know, they're not gonna move anytime soon, put it that way, you know, and, and as I said before. We can't change the past, we can allow it to happen, but now we have to think about the future. And how we wanna do approach the downtown core, you know, what, what it's gonna be, you know, that. Let's not worry about the past, let's worry about the future.
Let's move, move on to the next.
Three view, it's best. So I'm gonna show you a bunch of images of various placings around mostly the western side of the United States. Uh, first off, give me a gut reaction, it's gonna be kind of tough with a group, but, you know, shout if you feel like. Uh, and then focus in on the positive, negative, like, in specific aspects that you like and don't like. Uh, and I will give you, once you're done with that, uh, where it's at and kind of my planner brain feedback on it. Okay.
Positive. If that was the two, positive or negative, or one or the other, I think it looks charming, I think it looks pedestrian focused, I think it looks vibrant, a lot of activity. Oh, I just, I just think about like how many people I'd see walking around and enjoying the space, you park in more place, walk for several blocks.
I would say medium, like, I got a negative more, so there's, there's no landscaping really, it just feels like. It was blocked in with buildings and then I imagine snow around that, and it's a tunnel, so.
I think it's very pedestrian friendly and, um, attractive to stop. Okay, I was driving, I pulled into parking spot.
This one is Casimir, Washington, uh, stuff that I like about it, like everybody said, it's pedestrian friendly, you can still see the foothills behind it. Uh, you know, there's a physical sense of geography to it, uh, the awnings are great, I think that negative. Uh, these light posts are not going to actually cast any light on the sidewalk. This one, this pedestrian crossing, I think it's gonna create some shade issues. Uh, on part of what people can see, uh, as they're driving, it's a pedestrian somewhere in that shade, they may not recognize it as quickly. Um. And just, you can tell they probably got a grant about nineteen ninety-four. For all this, like, it feels, oh, but. For all this, like it feels over day.
I, I, I'm not seeing any landscaping.
Yeah, I mean, there's this hanging flower pots, it's the one business, but there's nothing cohesive. Landscaping requires a chain that doesn't count as landscaping.
Well, and it's a suburban mall.
It's, it's downtown, but yeah, it adds up the other way, sure. Uh, okay, next up.
Positive. There is landscaping. The streets feel a little bit wider, so it's not as closed in. There's more open sky. Pedestrian friendly.
Doesn't seem pedestrian friendly to me. Actually, at first, I mean, just like there, there is a light way down there to cross the street, but so like, it looks like there's less places to safely cross the street.
I would say probably as well, I mean, with landscaping and it is, that seems like the trap, you're not gonna get somebody going forty miles an hour down that road. You know, it's everything's kind of tight. So it is, we restrict um, the speed of vehicles and make it a little bit, a little slower. Portion of that.
Right? That's one, one direction. And, and are all the pictures gonna be some of somewhat of a similar like geography? Where we have four seasons or two seasons, whatever we have here.
I tried to mostly get places that are of a similar vibe to Bellevue.
Where is this one?
This is Bend, Oregon. Um, yeah, positives. Uh, I think there, you can see there's a little bit of bulb out on the street corner for shorter crossing distances to make it easier to cross the street. And it does look like there's a pretty good distance between, uh, say crossing spots and one-way traffic is gonna make people feel like they can drive a little bit faster. Uh, the cars backing out of the parking spaces is going to encourage them to slow down though. Uh, so that's good. Uh, the other kind of conflict I see is that there's, you know, um, clothes and things like that out in the sidewalk and side, uh, side posts and things like that. So it's pretty constrained area to actually be walking around in.
I thought those were people.
Do you have any pictures of old kitchen?
Yeah.
That next.
Well, the one thing I would say though is I like the, I like the crossing. You know, because there's a, there's a texture to the road, so it signals that it says place to cross. There is some landscaping next to that building. Um, I mean, but the upper right-hand side, I like the, the left side, I don't. Uh, but the bowl, we kind of have a little bit of the bowl about there. So you've got a little narrower crossing is, I, I, I think that's good.
We've, we've got a few of those broken light posts.
And parallel. I think it's superior to the parking lot structure.
I think I like that there's an obvious direction, like walking direction, like John was saying, but there's, there's texture changes, there's colors changes, there's bump outs. It's, it's very obvious where you could walk, where you can cross directional without being too much signage.
Honestly, there is a side of it that it has a lot less pedestrian focused. Um, it is, but I, it strikes me as actually a pretty good balance for what, you know, for what that location appears to need. Um, you know, you look at the, at the building on the far corner, it's got good trees. Uh, you know, just kind of shaded walkway there. Um, there's street trees between the, you know, between the, the, the roadway and the sidewalk on both sides. Um, you know, there's a side of it that not every, not every area is conducive to being very heavily pedestrian focused. Um, and I think the fact that our downtown core is on Highway seventy-five, I think we're gonna need to make some concessions and we're not gonna have a, our, our main street's never gonna look like those last two pictures and it shouldn't. Um, I think we need a way to get across it safely and comfortably and conveniently, but I don't think we'll ever, we ever will or should have a, have a Main Street, Highway seventy-five that looks like those two very heavily pedestrian focused last couple of pictures.
Maybe we could put that in the back alleyways?
Yeah, no, I, I, I love it.
Yeah.
In the right place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that looking at this style of parking with the expansion plays a lot more into the commuter traffic that happens through our town versus the annual parking spots that would create potential more congestion.
And I think at first glance for me, what I looked at was just this building on the left with nothing but hardscape and that was
That was the first thing.
Off putting.
Yeah.
You all are hired. You did great. You hit all the things I was gonna mention, except that this is Kalispell, Montana. I don't know if you guys have been there, like there's all these terrific mountains all around it. If I woke up there not knowing where I'm at, I would guess North Dakota somewhere.
Mountain inside.
Those are rainbows and falls. It does look like.
And what's the population there? By Will's Toyota.
Cute character.
Yeah.
Historic.
Yeah.
I mean, it feels like an old mountain town.
Come again, Tammy.
You guys highway.
There's the highway up ahead, which is kind of interesting. Like that's the first thing I saw, you know, like this is a cute town off a highway somewhere. Off a superhighway somewhere.
Yeah, there's no, well, except it looks like, I guess there's some parking there.
See, Mike, I, I, what I like about this is you got the, on my right side, you've got the the row of, what is it? Probably four or five buildings, but they're all together. But they all have a similar looking feel. So here's the question. How do they do, how do they all agree to that back in the day? To go, yeah, this is what we're gonna do because we can't figure that out, right? But they think, but they did it back then, you know what I'm saying? And it's like, it is great.
Lots of logging money and silver.
But that is not the money though. If they agreed on, came up, it was kind of all at the same time.
I mean.
So they answered your question, they, they built with what they had.
Right.
They had locally available brick and locally available sandstone, and so that's what you get.
And they didn't expand because it is expensive, because the more you expand out, the more expensive it gets. And that's why every building, like that's origi- our original building, why it started here this way, because that's how we've been building for a really long time because it's very expensive to then start flopping buildings outward and not. I mean, in Seattle. Same thing.
If you look at old Bellevue and old Haley, they had a lot of similar, similar appeal. Like place, some places burned down and then the cost to rebuild was a lot more expensive. And so people didn't do that. And then they created different, yeah, create, created different.
The one thing that I think is maybe similar to here is, I mean, our, our mountains are a little further away, but there, but you can see the mountains, you know, you can still have that, that, um, that context there. The one thing that is, is very straight. You know, there's, there's little um, texture to it. I mean, it's pretty much a straight line. Um, yeah, I mean, that's not horrible, but it'd be nice. Little certain varieties.
I prefer when, if it is straight like that, that there's like a kind of a bump in where parking goes, so it's not right in line with where the.
At the sidewalk.
Yeah, kind of like where, like how ours carve out a little bit and for parallel parking, so. Because then there's no confusion of what's a lane and what's parking. It's very clear.
And then bump paths for the crosswalk. Uh, you lose a little bit of, of your parallel parking space, but it makes for a way shorter perceived crossing distance. And better visibility. Would be an improvement to that.
I don't think the stripes for the crosswalk are as attractive as the other one, the one we saw before with the color. And they're not as obvious as when you're driving. Didn't, I mean, they're there, but a texture, color change. It's a brick favorites. Yeah, I think that made a big impact on kind of what I thought mine by that height, so.
This is Colorado.
Brick nail on the head. This is Wallace, Idaho. If you look at the man, like you said, or that, they're nice and they're the universe. Uh, yeah, they uh.
Did you know that, Rick?
What's that?
Did you know that?
Yeah, expensive time there. Yeah, center of the universe, right there. They, uh, that freeway at the end of the road was proposed to go right through the middle of town, so they designated the whole place as a historic district and got the IDD to move around.
Oh.
And so that is why it is.
How do we do that?
But there's also like a few blocks of this type of, uh, you know, it's an old, I think, they came up in a big mining in Timberton too, so.
Yeah.
A lot of money that comes into there. Yeah, I think the old. The only real design flaw I see is the little plastic signboard here and then the aluminum signage here kind of take you out of the historic feel a little bit. But other than that, I think this is one of the better reasons. Cartoonie. I was gonna say frontier town.
Old West.
It, it looks like a theme town. I mean, it, it might legitimately be that old and, and it, it looks like a town that's trying too hard to feel frontierese.
Definitely doesn't appear to be pedestrian.
As evidenced by the pedestrian out in the street.
Yeah, there's no crosswalks.
I don't hate the frontier look because it's, I, I like, to me, it's cohesive, like they've chosen a cohesive look for all of the buildings and I like that.
You know, I, I, I don't.
It's charming.
I kind of agree with you because when you sit there and look at Sisters Oregon, that looks a lot, that could be Sisters Oregon. I think downtown Sisters is beautiful. Um, it is, I, there's positive, negative, but they stuck with the theme of what they were trying to do. That's, that's okay.
And Pagosa Springs is like that too. And, and it can be done. We, but we would have to be part of the, and be seen as part of that gateway to the bigger sawtooths, right? And so then we play into the whole picture of Sun Valley and the whole picture of coming into the gateway. And, and we would have to totally commit to the appeal.
I think if it had a little more diversity, like a historic brick building or something there, I might like it a little more. Like I like the frontier. I like that they stuck to it. It's just lacking a little bit of diversity. Where it, it, it gives me Disney, you know, a little, a little too much. It just needs a little more diversity and then, um, yeah, it feels hard to cross the street. I wouldn't know where to cross the street right now. That was, and maybe we're just not seeing in this photo, but it looks like you'd be playing stronger.
And I mean, and just also just representation of our current population and community. The last census, our Hispanic community is what percentage? And I don't know to rebuild in Old West to me. A lot of people don't have great associations around that. So I mean, thinking about other populations besides just the light. Might identify as times.
And like I look at that building on the left and it's very kitschy on the front. But then that side elevation just loses me.
And Alex, they didn't choose to stick to the theme. They were forced to stick to the theme.
Yeah, so this was Winthrop, Washington. Uh, you guys are exactly correct. This was one that, uh, decided back in the eighties, I think, to really commit to the bit and go Old West and put in a bunch of design standards and say you have to be like this. And they got pretty close. Pulling up your horse to the gas station doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. There's a window AC unit hanging out the side.
Yeah.
But you know, like there's a nice boardwalk, like it's an authentic wood boardwalk and pretty cool. Uh, but yeah, it's like they really had to dive in there almost.
Well, but the thing though that you said though, Brian, that I wanna maybe emphasize is that they commit, they figured out what they wanted to do and they committed to it and that's what they got. And they can, so we can do it. We gotta figure that out and commit to it. Then we can come up with whatever it is.
And it'll make you, it'll make businesses, our constituents, everyone, and people in the community a lot easier to do business with us when we can commit to what we want. And we know our constituents say they want. So it'll make it a lot easier to do business. And promote business.
Well, and I look at this just to kind of tie back to code enforcement or performing, the, the more you have something for people to commit to, the more that it elevates. You know, the businesses to want to make sure their signage is right, you know, um, attracting new businesses to come in. So I think that, you know, kind of, I agree with what Tammy said, it's just establishing something. And I think that's where we get a little bit more of the people complying as well.
Well, and I think maybe you can speak to people once we actually provide them the services that they should receive. And then you can speak to them about what these other things are, but we're talking about these things and we're talking about crosswalks and stuff and we don't paint ours. We don't take care of these things. So sometimes the car, I know we're trying to look at this big picture again, but even in that, we, we aren't maintaining even the small things. And you kind of have to wonder how anyone wants to buy into our vision. When we can't even get what's here currently functioning. And I know you're working on it, but I'm saying when you talk about buy-in, you've gotten a lot of feedback from people, right? And it hasn't been about this. It has been about the crosswalks and they don't get it. And when we're gonna come running at them, we're hey, you could be the Wild West, you could look like Calisper, look at all these great things. And at some point, we're gonna paint the crosswalk. So I'm just reminding us of.
I think it all ties into plan and project management though, right? So while we could go back and just paint the current crosswalks, we could also be working to, uh, you know, redesign them and paint them and implement it all at the same time.
Absolutely. She just brought up buy-in though, right? And you're not gonna get buy-in until you do something that you're supposed to do, right? Total side note, I friggin' love that. I don't know why, but I do. I moved from back east, so I totally like that quiet. So cool. I think we got great buildings downtown. Mahone's that, that, oh, like where you expect to see saloon girls. The, across the street, expect to see saloon girls. I think that's kind of cool, but that's me.
Old Ben. Hotel Baxter. Pretty iconic. I mean, like, um, you know, it's funny about this picture, that hotel on the right that has a little cafe up top. That wasn't around when I was in college, you know, that's a new structure, you know, it's really contemporary style. But somehow it all still works. You've got like the old Hotel Baxter over there, which is just a massive brick building, very decorative inside. Um, so a lot of diversity, but a lot of brick buildings on Main Street in Bozeman. But somehow, yeah, that hotel comes in and it totally fits. So it kind of comes in with the charm.
It, it looks very walkable.
I agree with Alexis how I think you, this is a good example of how historical and modern can mix together and create a very cohesive field where it doesn't all have to be frontier facade. If it's designed well, there can be cohesion of old again. Yeah. So I like that a lot.
In Seattle with like design review, with like older buildings and keeping historic charm, they would allow like if it has a certain front that looks brick, but the rest of the building on the back. That looks brick, but the rest of the building on the backside could be to save on design costs. Um, and keeping the facade and the feeling of it within a like, certain boroughs in different areas.
I very specifically include this one because it has that big iconic Hotel Baxter on one side and then the new modern butterfly roof on the other side. Want to see we yell hot.
This is like. I think this is a great picture of the fear. The resident fear, like if, in my opinion, people like, we don't want, how, this is what they think, so I think it's a great, um, opposition what we're doing with that.
Yeah, there's no diversity in what it looks and feels like, it all looks the same, it's too big. There's no character, that's.
But I would say just focusing on something, just a smaller part of it, just the lower strip on the right. I think if you were going to do multifamily housing, I think it's broken up really well with like color. And like projections that are coming out, you know, if something was going to be in a high traffic area.
Like if you took, if you cropped off.
Just, yep, just that little, yeah, don't look at all the tall stuff, just this little, like, just this three, um, story. Along the street there.
You just cut off.
I do like a couple of the design bump outs too, where you can see like, you know, if you go a little further down on the right past the tree. Or you can see like, oh, that's where you'd enter the building or the retail space or the commercial space or just a few. That make it inviting, so it breaks up the sameness.
Yeah, you can't see the crosswalk there too, you know, the 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 yellow crosswalk signs, but then also the texture change for people.
There's also by path on.
The bike lane. Or just opening up your car door and having cyclists.
Good bike lanes are great, but that is, they're worse than none.
The building material thrift is expanding its services as a restore. But we will not be offering cryotherapy just for clarity.
You guys can't see it, there's inside. Yeah, so this is Sugar House neighborhood in Salt Lake City, uh I wanted to, uh, see if you guys nice thought that. And it worked.
And Sugar House used to be just an absolutely amazing. And beautiful eclectic area, like I've watched it, that happened to it over the past forty years. And it's really sad to see how it has changed into what seems like it's. California, and I'm not trying to diminish California, I just mean it becomes. Just linear and it's so linear without character.
I was gonna say, I grew up in Salt Lake, I know old Sugar House and I know this Sugar House and I do not like this Sugar House. And I wonder if that's what some of the residents on the poll were concerned about when they said fear of being pushed out or gentrified. They went for growth.
That Sugar House is not sweet to me.
And that was my last one. So then the next topic is housing, uh so we. Are pretty limited in Idaho as far as requiring, you know, deed restrictions as part of income or that they're employed by a local business or things like that. But we can incentivize, we can use carrots, we can't use sticks. So is this something we want to pursue, is this something, what are the specifics of a deed restriction that we'd want to be considering if we do? And what are we going to use to incentivize, you want building height, parking, uh. Decrease number of units.
And what are the requirements that we're basing our answers on? Well, what goals are we trying to meet in answering, like how do I form a, an answer to the question, is it. That you're supposed to have as many, the answer should be predicated on. Housing as many people from out of state, but should house as many people from in the state, it should house as many people from catch them, it should put them up in. As you can go up to fifty stories, what are the requirements that you're, we're building against avoid, is that a wrong, bad question?
Um, so all of like, so for affordable housing, I don't know if you looked over and I can send you information or include you into some of those meetings. But there's like the lease the locals program, so they have to have been. Living here for so long, retired, you know, they look at certain incomes, they're, they can't live. No, I'm inside of Blanca County, so there's that option, there's also the deed restrictions that we. We could do, so and there's also the in move fees, so the developer just pays because they don't want to build it.
No, I'm at what build you need is this meeting.
I mean, there's currently two hundred and twenty people that are currently known as homeless within the valley right now. And we have over capacity within our ordinance in Bellevue with people living in households, so I think housing is a need.
But the residents have not established it as a need is what I'm saying, so all I'm trying to do is who's, who. I I don't know, they have established about the housing and security.
Just because I don't know, my neighbor has fifteen people living in their house, doesn't mean it exists, I mean, I do trust the professional, the housing authority that's. Doing these studies on that, so we know there's a need, but maybe I just don't realize it because I don't see, because I don't see people on the street.
Is that, are you going to service the need when they fly in the next six hundred, is that also what we're trying to serve?
Right, but it's not necessary.
I'm just asking, truly, I'm trying to establish.
I ask the community and I ask the young people, you know, they're having to live in. Certain, like, I'm out, I'm asking, like, hey, what's your housing situation, I'm curious, or like, people have to work. Like, right now, the average rent is sixteen hundred dollars a month, okay? Um, the average pay for somebody working in service is twenty two hundred, and that's before like taxes are taking them. And so just car payments, general, like first, just young people in general trying to get their foot up, like, just general. Housing, the difference for like, it's not people coming here, it's people who are already here or like.
It's all the people who are driving north every day. To come work, it's, you know, housing here so that they don't have to commute as far.
And why are we trading resident wants to subsidize these other, I'm just trying to figure out the baseline.
Well, and I I I hear what you're saying, but I also think that you are, um.
Like, how do I answer?
Well, I think you're trying to say all residents don't want this, and I think that's a, that's a. I think we have a diversity of need, we have some residents who need and want this, we have some residents who don't want this. So we're looking at. Uh, you know, options here to serve. Resident need, resident demand, and resident desire to not see this happen, so I think that's the framework of the discussion is. There's an identified need, there's an identified resistance, so what does it look like? You know, in terms of what we think is appropriate for Bellevue for housing incentives, knowing we have those two sides. Of residents in this community is, is how I'm looking at this, but Tammy has her hand raised, uh Tammy?
I just wanted to ask to be specific, because in general, I thought most of our conversation was trying to be. Centered around the downtown, the business district or the this district that we're trying to develop. So I, I, I think it's really difficult to try to have a general discussion, housing incentives. That seems like the overlay of the city versus what am I talking about in my downtown? These, this is the core district that we're trying to establish appropriate. Ordinances for developing, so I, and I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm confused. But I just want to make sure to ask that or comment on that and ask for clarification.
I'd like to one, add just one other thing, like if we're, if we're basing on the, um, our discussion on what the citizens want, like you're bringing up. And if we're using the survey results that we have, you know, seventy seven percent say they're Bellevue residents, so it's likely that not a lot of our respondents. Are, have a place to live in Bellevue, they're not considered Bellevue residents, I wonder about, you know, like. Are they traveling up north, are they not able to come yet, I think that's why I rely heavily on the studies that have been done as far as housing that is needed. Based on versus people that are responding to this who don't, aren't worried about housing because they have a place to live. I wonder.
But the resident art, isn't our job to provide timely, reliable, affordable and can. And uh, safe services to the community and to fill their priorities, to respect their priorities. And in this survey. Housing on Main Street was not established as a priority, it came in maybe third. Even even though the survey was very limited in the options.
But also acknowledging that maybe it's not a concern for them because they have a house already.
But how, then how have you collected the other voices of Bellevue, we've talked about this in the past, and I'm not just, the problem is that we. All that we've heard, what you've seen, every time you guys have brought, have have raised or had a public hearing. On these issues, on rezoning Main Street, on providing these things, the residents who have sounded off have been against it. When you go around and speak to people, there are a litany of priorities above these questions that we're answering here and in this context. And I'm not like, oh, if the residents are coming out and saying, hey, we don't care about our own housing and security. We'd love to increase density because density will spike our fire insurance rates and we want to be driven out, then fabulous, I will help make that happen. But I I have to suggest that that's not where we are and we're basing this on statistics from special interests that. That are, you've got, we've got the Wood River Land Trust telling us we need more density and yet the impact to our community could be significant. Right, if you don't properly, so.
But that's a more interesting point coming from Wood River Land Trust, who wants to preserve open space.
What we need to achieve, right, supplying services in a timely fashion. Also part of government, part of planning zoning commissions, part of elected officials, is also not ignoring. Depending reality of future, so at the same time, we need to be looking forward as we are trying to focus on the now and. But again, that is the framework of this discussion, that is the framework of what, you know, our community development director is trying to do. This is not something we're trying to make happen tomorrow, this is the second work session we have in a long. Line of discussions that need to continue to keep happening, and so we can keep focused on. I understand residents, 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 but also there is some guidance from your city that you need to look towards the future. And it will have resident feedback to it, you know, there's nothing we're passing through that will not engage the residents at different stages of this. So when we look at housing incentives, Brian, are you able to kind of share with us kind of the list of what you think are our options? And we can react to those, or is this something you might want to present to us as options based on, you know, what you think? In in the next space, how would you like to look at incentives?
I think. I think of kind of matrix, right, there's, uh, what we are. Willing or what our aim should be, is it to. Uh, for economic development, to make sure that our businesses have employees, should we be restricting for. That priority, should we be. Restricting based on income levels, making sure that the folks in need of most have access to housing. Should we be trusting the open market and just letting things run, uh so that is one side of it. The other side would be what incentives are we willing to, are interested in, uh. Giving up for developers to provide, since parking is a building, density is something. And one could be. Silver bronze gold as far as the quality of meeting our needs and based on that, we're going to give up. For five incentives at a mature role, or it could just be to board this. That, that, that's it.
Thank you, Tammy, go ahead.
I am still looking for a little bit more direction on or clarity on. Is this supposed to be the general city of Bellevue? And any district, are we still talking about just. What we're looking at creating for our downtown business district, what have you? Like industrial, not like industrial, I'm, I'm trying to look for what, where these in housing incentives, you're trying to. Make them lay, like the whole city or not, I just want to make.
Just clarify for the sake of, clarify for the sake of whole discussion, going back to the intention of the work session. Um, we are focused on the text amendment that focuses on the business zone, limited business residential zone, so. Um, yes, the focus of the discussion is business, just.
He's throwing it out, right?
An option, yes. The bar on the side of the screens, um, cut them. Uh, I think it just ensures.
Um, I think right now we don't have anything, right, so to just continue for free market to just. Like, you know, building proposed on Main Street, those would be, you know, they're supposed to be live work. But real estate market and that's if the, doesn't get inflated more, starting off at seven hundred thousand. The combined median income is eighty thousand in the Wood River Valley, so who can afford a seven hundred thousand dollar? Even if it's a live work townhome, because if you, even if you're working out of there, you're going to have to then build that out for improvements as well, so it's like. For me, and just from my experience and seeing how it's worked prior, like, okay, so let's say. A mixed use retail in the bottom, okay, and then the developer says, I will provide, you know, this many units for, so it's. It's not just all affordable housing, there's, you know, there's, um, there's different ways that you can layer it, it's like. Uh, thirty percent AMI or sixty percent AMI and there's ten units and are dedicated, dedicated within that building that we go. Towards, like, there's different frameworks, or is it just the in move fee? And is that something that we want to take on in the city of Bellevue, building your own housing when there's already other people doing it? So I think ultimately, like to say, and then also for like retail and businesses, you know, Saturday night on Main Street. Have you guys been out? It's dead, it's quiet, there's nobody out, even like, and the businesses close because they're not making. They close because there's not the business, so if you don't have foot traffic, you don't have the business, but if you have some people living. Up above, they will come down and enable support those businesses, but how much of that is wanted or needed?
Yeah, I think that's right, and I'm not, I think that's, it's a broad housing. No, and how much you ask the residents to subsidize, um, other people? With, with moving things and stuff, sorry, go ahead, John.
Well, I think what we need to, the goal is, is not just the housing, is how, how do we make our community whole? Because there is a huge hole in our community, we don't have places for people to live. That can work at Mahoney's, that can work at all these places, they're coming up from somewhere else, that's not a long term solution. Okay, well, that's, you know, that's propped up, so we need to figure out how we can fill that gap and the the incentives. I I think it's probably would have to have a, uh, a degree, you know, or a range maybe, uh, so. Cause it's not, you, you know, one size fits all to any of this, it's like, okay, you're going to have, this is what it's going to look like and. This is how many apartments you're going to have up above and then all of a sudden we look at the, look like the picture that we didn't want. So, so it's, we have to, I I don't know what all of those incentives are, you know, that are, what our options are. But I think we need to entertain as many that are plausible, um, that, that we can. Cause we're, we're still not going to become full with addressing of, or allowing housing on Main Street, that's still isn't going to, so that's not just. Going to fix everything, but it'll, it'll attempt, it'll get us partway there, and so. And so, I I mean, I I'm all for it, I I but I I don't know what the 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 there's, like you said, there's different, with everything, there's a trade. And we got to figure out what those trade offs are.
Yeah.
And what's worth it and what's not worth it.
I was just the same with housing incentives, I think we need to look at the greater. Our pictures, like, we can't be thinking of housing incentive just for. The for downtown, we need to think of it, and like, there are empty lots on my streets, you know, so, you know. There needs to be a broader picture on housing incentives versus just in the downtown core.
And I need to be subsidized too.
We we'll have to start somewhere.
Yes.
And then then this, whatever comes of this can trickle out and and go out and be. Used in different portions of.
I I think the two that I see a problem on the giving upside are. Typically where I see issues up north, there are parking and building height. So those are the two that I have the most aversion to in the give up category.
Aversion?
Yeah, like not wanting to go there. Also, I mean, we talk about building height, we talk about safety and services, um we have a building height restriction based on. Our fire program here in the city of Bellevue too, so we'd have to think about height and. What that looks like for our prior programs, so I think there's, you know. A reason why our building height is what it is in terms of services at this time.
I think you're spot on, because that's like, yeah, we don't want to go up five stories, because then all of a sudden, you know, Greg's got it. Have more fire trucks and ladder trucks and all this stuff, we don't want to, you know, have this be an incrementally, you know, downward spiral burden to the community.
And parking, you look at, I mean, it's such a sore, sorry, cut you off.
Oh, yeah, no.
I mean, the argument on that is the whether it require consolidation, and they're doing that for efficiency. And because the expansion of wildfires and what that is, so like. If we have a burning population, no matter what, the fire department is going to have to grow.
Grow, but then also you you don't have to go, you know, that what is it, what's the tallest? Structure in the whole valley, you know, we don't need to go two stories above that, let's keep it that or below, so we're still within our context.
Because if I live in Seattle, doesn't that mean I want Seattle, I don't want that, I'm not making, I'm beating three stories.
I I concur. With the mayor's uh concern to over parking as I am a downtown business owner. But I would also like to say that on our huge staff of three. Maybe we have more now, police officers. Right, as we increase our density, it's not just about fire. So if on a a regular lot where we would normally be allowing one home. And I'm and I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm saying these are the concerns. So if now we're not allowing one home, but I'm allowing. Six ye- six apartments with, you know, with parking spaces that nobody complies with. Who, what's the real strain I'm gonna put on the city? I'm gonna put on the city public works and the city police department on a regular, every single day or every week occasion. And they, you know. That seems unfair to not consider that as well.
Thanks, I agree with you, Tammy, I was using fires as an example, but if you look at all the services, streets. Um please, public works, all that, that's it's looking through it from that scope is important.
Sorry, yes, hey.
So Brian, the most dense project that we. Currently allow for residential is a duplex. That was what started this whole thing. Well, honestly. We can do better.
No reminder that currently in the business zone, one ADU is allowed. Housing, that that does exist, that was also part of how we ended up here was looking at. Two ADUs, instead of one ADU in the business zone, that's also the history of this discussion. So I think when we're talking about density, I don't know if anyone is talking about a sixplex on Main Street. I haven't heard anyone talk about that level of density, I think.
So like, it's pretty much everybody opposed to like twelve apartment units. On Main Street, like above retail, and also we have a developer. What's the cost per square footage, you know, for building right now?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What's the cost per square foot for building right now?
Well, that's a difficult question, because this is Bellevue, I'm up in Ketchum. So. I couldn't give you a good answer right now, because I really don't know exactly what you guys are offering me to do. So I throw it number, you know, oh, yeah, eight hundred thousand or something like that.
Right. But I'm just thinking about like the amount of units to build that makes it the return for.
That's exactly right, the density, we're not gonna bring up. You started with the density, I mean, that's what I'm listening for is density. Then I'm thinking about design and desirability too, but you can't overbuild for buildings. And that's what I'm concerned about, um although I just did have a a email from a potential. Person on first who was in the uh nuclear business and in the uh. But still, I'm forgetting it for right now, but the interesting part of the conversation on text was that. My friends in Bellevue, or excuse me, my friends are catching are waking up to Bellevue. And I want to be involved in a little project here, and I, you know, like, bringing in some input. Um so to get back to what what does it cost for? It's gonna be numbers, it's gonna have to be crunched, we're gonna have to kind of narrow the building up, because we can't overbuild, I keep going back to the project that's. Up on countryside, I think it's called, it hasn't sold yet, it's uh.
You got the plans for the original that you were going to present, how, what was the square footage of those units that you were?
What was the square footage of the units? Sixteen eighteen hundred square feet.
And they were probably about starting at seven hundred thousand.
And you wanted to keep the price range between seven and eight hundred thousand, because they've got a project up here, it's over nine hundred thousand, it hasn't sold. So my original architect and I went back and forth on that. But.
And that's how many units, like eight?
How many units?
Yeah, it was like eight units, but if.
That's eight units on three lots, and I like to see. The whole block, you can be involved, that's kind of my step, which right now and. We're moving at early conversations on that, but.
If there were more units per that lot size, though, would that bring down the cost?
Oh, that's that's where we went in the density thing, and that's where it all stopped, because they looked at. Project and I can only go six, wanted to do eight, and so that stopped us, what, sixteen months ago? So the idea is to build. Two bedroom units that are gonna be in the fourteen hundred square foot. Um and then with parking and whatnot, that's where we're at, but again, I really don't want to bring up any more ideas, since we can really get the idea that you've created. With the new concept of, you know, bringing in ideas that are not quite tied as.
Adjust units like that renting right now are going market rate four thousand dollars. A month, right, so if you go for that square footage and it's in more renting with new construction, they start off at about three or four thousand, correct? So when you're thinking about square footage, what we're allowing bigger picture, you know, people are like, we live and everybody needs this wide open space, but also people working restaurants, younger people. They're working two jobs. No one's home, I've had people, they're like, I just want to be out of this crazy person's house that I'm renting this room for, that they keep on assigning other jobs for me when I get home. So this is super thought.
Snistered a pot a little, but I think something that's interesting to look at is while we are talk about talking about affordable housing, you look at um. You know, the the quickly thing that just came up, and I think. Even Ark was discussing, you know, we we also have to understand that there there's different parts on the market, right, there's affordability and there's also. People who are looking for a seven hundred, eight thousand, eight hundred thousand dollar condo in a in a downtown walkable area, and so. Um well, we want to be conscious of. Our citizens and our current residents and all that, we also have to look at where the entire valley is going and and be aware that. There is also demand for these higher end units, there's demands for stray horn, there's demands for Riverside Estates, so while Bellevue. You know, has a lot of working class here, we also do have people who are coming in and and want nice homes and nice apartments, so um. I think that's part of the free market that we're discussing.
Living in a resort community?
Living in a resort community is is the valley, so um I think. I try and look at it from both lenses when we're having these discussions, so just to put that up there. Is we have a large market that we are um working with here in terms of our citizens and our entire valley.
Well, we have those three building pads behind Silver Dragon in Bellevue Business Park. And they've sat undeveloped for twenty years at least. And there's been a lot of people interested in. Taking up a project on those, and that was kind of one of the discussions. You know, I I would tell people, well, it's it's not permitted, sorry, you know, and they're like, but. It's it's got parking, it's got it's it's got everything we need, you know, and. So, you know, it's it's something, it it's a problem that really needs to be addressed. I I believe, and I will go ahead with a great big spoon and stir that spot. Uh because I think it's really important.
Also going to add into the pot stirring. It has been frequently discussed that we are struggling providing services to the level that people expect. How we fund the government is through property taxes, building permits, water and sewer fees. And spend our money is on per linear foot of water and sewer pipe and asphalt and all the other things that we. Provide, if we can lower the linear feet of everything we provide. And increase the property taxes and revenue side, we can provide better services.
That's certainly one way. Right, and that's the small town, you know, there's there's no doubt we get trapped in these things all the time. So you're you're spot on, but I think I hope we can come up with things more than. Um continuing to take away from the residents um who love the open space, who love the dark sky, who are waiting for repairs on the streets. And who are not interested and who are struggling themselves to make their nut and not asking for anything but affordable services. And so can we, you know, um you know, I don't know why you can try, how you can charge people property tax if you're not gonna give them the services that they're paid for.
But also, you know, when you talk about affordable services. Like Brian's saying, the more people who are, you know, paying into the pot makes, you know, can help make the services more affordable.
Well, and that's a well.
But I think, you know, we're also talking about lots that already exist, right, we're talking about zones that already exist, we're talking about, you know. Pieces so far in this discussion right now, when we look at business zone, you know, it's it's already existing vacant lots that are available for sale and purchase. Um it's plots that have been sitting there for twenty years, so just, you know, continuing to understand that. Looking at, you know. A zone that already exists and what we want to do with it, with lots that already exist that are available for sale and development, um. And just kind of continuing down that scope as well. And. That's you, yeah, oh, Danny.
I love being sick, I can be as quiet as I want to be. I. Uh so appreciate the value of recognizing what it costs to develop. And and I know the mayor and I and even Jessica, and we're all as city elected officials, it's not our job. To consider like adjusting our. Our ordinances. Solely based on the cost of what it what it takes to develop. Property, right, we have to think of it more in long term. Um developing our city and and looking at the long term sustainability of our city, not just. That it costs whatever amount of money it costs, because it's not because of us. That it costs that much to develop. I wanted to mention that. But I also wanted to acknowledge. I mean, the city of Bellevue has done an amazing job meeting the the housing needs. Of the community for many, many, many years. We have always been that city. Where people moved to and lived in. To because there was nowhere else to live. No one else, you couldn't afford to live anywhere else. And I only encourage us to continue to think that way, that as we as we work toward. Devising ordinances, like I don't even know who the hell is texting me, but as we are working to devise ordinances. And or rules and regulations to help us better guide. The development of our city, that we do so with that in mind, that we're looking, like Sean says, toward the future. Right, we recognize the value of what we have established from the past. And that we look toward the future. And what has brought so many people to our community? And why they want to live here, and what makes it so special? Right, so how can we encourage housing? To fit within our broader goals and needs, doesn't mean we need to solve. Everyone's issues and everyone's needs, we get misguided. And I I hate to see this, because I'm blonde, I'm blue eyed, and I'm white. And I solve problems every day on the crisis hotline. But it is so indicative of us as white people to solve greater. Community needs, right, this is what we're elected to. And sometimes we're solving needs that people don't even or won't even. Oblige, right, so if we create. A a hundred new housing spots or a thousand new housing spots. But these people, they have no desire. To want to live in Bellevue, they they would rather have their five acre parcel in Chishone or wherever they are. I only caution us to be careful. To solve for needs. That aren't necessarily ours to always, but specifically to solve for. But to look at this in a greater sense, right? As we continue to work together. Uh obviously, sorry, that's it.
Thank you, Tammy. Um Brian, I just want to bring it back to you in terms of housing incentives, do you feel like we got enough direction from us?
Not really, but I think I will take a stab anyway, and then you guys can discuss it next time.
Yeah, it kind of feels like you presenting for a reaction might be the nice next step on this, okay, wonderful.
One thing I think with with that, because I agree, it was just to, and when you put together the package, you know, whatever that looks like. So um to look at then the trade offs, the pros and cons, so we can kind of, yeah, so we can. See very clearly what we're talking about, given up in terms of those things, that that would help me at least.
And the numbers, right? What you're gonna generate with the the tax revenue you'll generate from your proposals?
I don't know that I'll be able to generate.
Okay, but that ultimately is appropriate to have, right?
I think that that is something that needs to be considered and thought of as we're developing ordinances, what the long term financial impacts are going to be. Getting specific on this ordinance is going to generate this many dollars. I don't think we can achieve because we don't know what the private market is gonna react. Does that make sense?
Yes, I, oh, I talked, I mean, it's a process, I just think it's increasing, you know, we. Yes, I oh, I talked, I mean, it's a process. I just think it's increasing, you know, we we're missing a lot of documentation, a lot of the things that we've done that that validate claims about what we say is gonna happen or what's gonna do this. You know, you can, I brought up, as I mentioned, that that um, you know, underwriters are are wary of Blaine County and I should be able to validate that and I should show you the underwriters that are leaving and how I believe it could impact our our um, housing instability, right? When you change them today, I should be able to validate that.
I mean, you've always been a ninety five percent fire is in Bellevue and they still build here.
Oh, I'm not saying you don't still build. It's just they're leaving, the underwriter are leaving, so you won't be able to get insurance anymore.
We are a rental condo in Sun Valley and uh, for the condo complex is our insurance.
Yeah, so and I mean, it's just, it's a changing, it's it's relevant to the discussion. It's relevant to city planning because some cities are gonna choose not to rebuild in ways that maybe the Pacific Pelisades have built. That maybe Bellevue looks at a direction and says, heck, we see this coming. We have limited water supply and we know density could impact our community. And so we're gonna be very careful about increasing density and with on our our grounds because of the ramifications. Uh, really expensive um, housing insurance does not make affordable housing, right? You create affordable housing and no one can insure them. It's no longer affordable, right? So those are concerns. That's all I'm saying is is bringing those things and making sure they're part of of a discussion and and path. I'm sure the developer folks will agree, if you can't insure your stuff, or if it's really expensive, it changes your map.
Every representative will have their own matrix at which they're weighing this against. So I think that sounds like that will be something. You will. Anything else, Brian?
I guess I was wondering, are there incentives or things that our development director thinks are appropriate or acceptable to encourage housing to fit within our broader goals and needs that he could present for consideration instead of a general, you know, that.
Yeah, that was the that was the direction I was given in the room was to present something and we'll give you guys's sense of it on the next.
And I'm, yeah, I just was asking if there were things with your experience based on the fact that most of us don't lack, not all of us, I don't mean every one of us, but most of us lack to the experience that we may say and depend on hiring someone like you to advise us what may be some appropriate and acceptable incentives. Or or just or things like the mayor pointed out and myself living on Main Street and having a business on Main Street, absolutely being like saying people are only gonna have one car is kind of silly. So developing something that a a housing, even a mixed use, that would only allow one vehicle and off street parking is not acceptable. So some presenting some acceptable and unacceptable things, I think are common for us to be able to help move forward.
And I'll just wrap that up for you that um, Brian has been given direction to present incentives. Um, kind of, you know, a a broad range of ideas and positive and negative. So that is the direction that Brian will be going in in terms of incentives. So thank you.
That is again a good segue uh, to the next steps. I will start drafting up some more concrete solid ordinances. My original timeline uh, was have this ready like for adoption by early March. Seems like it'll probably be another couple of sessions of working through the details and getting to consensus, uh, but I'll still get some drafts together and get something tangible for you guys to review and think on. Um, there's the dead end right of ways in town that we discussed at the first meeting. I think there's a lot of opportunities there. I think formulating a more structured plan will be something to do in the next several months. Uh, and then funding opportunities for public improvements with Bura and uh, potentially creating business improvement district, exploring grant opportunities. These are all things that I'm gonna be working on as well. And then uh, there's a lot of discussion uh, tonight and the first meeting on roadway changes and just incorporating the transportation elements into the overall feel and function of downtown. Uh, we are working on transportation master plan uh, that will be uh, aiming for adoption, I think, or summer of twenty twenty six, if I'm correctly, uh, so that'll be coming forward as well. That's all I got.
Thank you.
So to to clarify, next steps will be draft ordinances and will they go to to understand order? Formal public hearings first or is it something you would wanna workshop before we take it to formal public hearing?
Uh, we can do it either. If you guys feel the workshop would be beneficial, I think that seems like would be a good thing to do based on nights.
Is anyone in opposition to the next step being another workshop versus going straight to public hearing or something? It sounds like there's still.
Workshop.
Yep, great. So I would say let's go for the workshop direction. And with that, we can then have a discussion of at what level then are we, you know, is it a public input? In between, does it before it comes back to workshop versus a public hearing, we can kind of decide the next step after the next workshop is what I would think.
Yeah, I think if we're gonna miss the March timeframe, it is better to work on it over the summer and have it ready for adoption in October, November, so we're not changing.
Yeah, I don't I don't feel like because let's just keep going.
Yeah.
And not putting a hard and fast on.
No, I know what I'm saying is I don't think we need to be in a rush. We're missing this deadline. We should just take our time and get to where we want.
But I would also advise, let's keep the momentum going and not slow down. Unless we feel collectively we need to bump the brakes, but we have good momentum. So I would say let's make it timely.
Are we done?
I think.
Is this the public hearing? Is this the topic that will lead the public hearing on Monday? Did I miss center? What is that?
That's on your agenda. We can chat about it.
But that's got nothing to do with the ordinance.
Have anything to do with what we discussed tonight.
Got it.
Stop in Monday and how about that?
But it's nothing to do with planning department.
It is, yeah, but go ahead and read through the packet and supporting documents and have a conversation with myself or Brian.
Okay, can I ask another question before? If Ryan's in that, why, when are the meetings about, when are the planning meetings like this? About the things that the residents have prioritized, like safe streets and implementing that type of planning, emergency preparedness. When, I'm just asking, when are those things? I've had, I've seen two of these. I missed one. I didn't really know.
So when's the one about? The intention of each work, like when we're having a work session like this, it's focused, right? So it's focused on this business zone amendment. Things that you're bringing up would be discussions that we could have and they could result in agenda items that could result in part of our strategic planning that we have going on next week for council. So we can discuss more appropriate times.
Okay.
Bring those up. Okay, well, then I would welcome a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm gonna adjourn.
All the paper. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.